Please stand and join us to pledge your allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. It's the required public hearing for our new project. And it's time for discussion. Anybody has questions or comments, please bring them up.
Did you want to open the public hearing first?
Oh, I didn't do it. You have motioned to open the public hearing.
I will make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second, in my favor.
Aye.
Aye. Now you can introduce yourself and ask your questions.
Alright, so I'm Melissa Appleby. And I'm basically here because I've lived here all my life. And I bought my home here about fifteen years ago. And I did that on my own. And I still do that on my own. This town is raising rates in every possible way. I'm talking property, trash, light, power, sewers. Every facet of things, it builds it, you cannot eliminate out of your budget. Have gone up and up and up. My budget, what I'm given with my money that I have to go and pay my bills, I don't just say, oh, I'll just raise my taxes and money will come in and my bills will get paid. My neighbors don't pay my bills, I pay them bills. And the only thing I can eliminate is, is not this stuff. It keeps going up and up and up and up. The point I have considered multiple times of leaving this town. But when you're raising your kids here and they're years away from finishing school, you don't want to. You don't want it. There's me, I've been gone. This cost of living in this town has literally driven me to the point of wanting to leave. My kids are about to graduate. I got two more years and a half. Do you want to keep me in this town? Do you care if people want to live here? Because it's you guys that have been raising these rates. You guys who have not lived within the means of the budget of taxes. You guys that have changed, decided to just raise taxes over and over again. You guys stand and justify it over and over and over again. It is time for you guys to not only not raise the taxes, but start eliminating the taxes that you guys have recreated. You guys can cut that budget. I've had to cut my budget. I live within my means. I try over and over again to do those things. Where's your bootstraps on that? Where is your recognition that there's other people in this community that can't afford to live here? That you're making it a possibility? Where's your heart? Where's your compassion and care about them? Show me. Do not raise these rates. And not only that, I want to see that you care about me. And I want you to dig deep and get those taxes down from where they are now. Show me. It's time for elimination. If there's a pothole in the road, leave it. If the town cares about it, they'll dig deep and they'll come out of their pockets and they'll pay for that road. Whatever you've got to do to eliminate any bill that you have to, to get this budget down. Look at the cost of living. Nobody can afford even the groceries. It's gone up and up and up. So literally every cost of living is insanely high right now. How do you expect somebody to pay the bill? Do you care about your town? Show me.
It's a comment that the majority of the items you just listed are off city.
I'm running to you.
They are city issues.
You are part of this.
Darn right I am. I've lived here for over a year.
You are part of those costs. And you are justifying them all the time on Facebook. So don't tell me you don't think everything that they do is okay. I'm not saying that they're right or wrong, or anybody is. I'm just telling you, it's gotten to the point where it's beyond words. And it's true, I can't afford to live here. I sat back there six, seven years ago going, I don't know how I'm going to make this bottom. I got two boys I raised. Two boys I take care of on my own. One without a father. I do it. I like this town. I've lived here all my life, except for one year, I lived here. Seriously. I know you guys are not trying to be evil doers. I love this town. I've been proud of them in this town. I've been proud of all the things that they've done in this town. I'm proud of the fact that our streets aren't going to run down. Or our properties don't look like crap. Or that we've done great festivals like the Fourth of July. But I don't really think that flowers on Main Street are a big priority unless, that the, obviously, that there's a real disconnect between property, the cost of living here to where we need to be. And I'm telling you that you guys need to take into consideration that the rates of living here, living period, have gone up as well. And that if you need to, then you need to cut out things that we would like to do. Things that we normally would do and lower those costs.
I understand, I understand what you're saying. And I totally, I totally get higher prices. I understand that too. I don't want to pay six dollars for a carton of eggs when I go to the grocery store. So I understand what you're saying. However, the city, the flowers on Main Street, that's a city level? So are you going to go to the-
I don't care about the stupid flowers on-
Are you going to go to the meeting tonight then and talk to the city?
Unfortunately, you have to take a day and a half to go to the city meetings. Eight o'clock, twelve o'clock, four forty-five.
This is a county meeting.
And, and, and don't tell me you guys don't care. Because I've seen you guys justify the city's actions. So that's the only reason why I brought the flowers up. I mean, you guys justify them all the time. You stand up for them. You should. It's a community. You guys should back each other. I get that. But you guys have not taken consideration whatsoever that the cost of living has increased and that the money doesn't. That the cost has to go down. They can't afford it. They can't. You have to, to cut when you know the price of living in your community is going up without expectation. You know that it costs a lot of money to go get eggs at your grocery store. Or beyond eggs, meat, or flour, or anything you want to purchase. You know this. And yet you wanted to put them to board. You put this decision together. You said, yeah, well, we'll just rein the rates because I wasn't going to give us more money. That was your solution?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to, that's fine. Thank you for your comments. And I would like to open it up for anyone else to, go ahead, yes.
Okay, I'm Allison Michael. I live in Westburg Township. I stand your budget report on forty-ten dash thirty-seven, ninety-one hundred zero zero zero, forty-four seven hundred. Misleadings. Wow, in the work. You folks voted five hundred thousand dollars. That's a half a million dollars for miscellaneous. I mean-
I think that's strange.
Won't you have to? Okay, how can we just give five hundred thousand?
Probably stuff that was posted on Facebook. So, so I had an explanation, Ms. Leland.
Uh, you would know the line codes better than I do.
If there's no information, because they seem to be lost. They don't even know. If, you know, if there's some big item that's coming out of there, it should be line item. A half a million dollars, folks, come on. No wonder our taxes are going up.
Forty-ten, thirty-seven, ninety-one hundred zero zero zero. Page two of five. The second page of five. Forty-four seven hundred, is it?
Uh, that was capital projects.
Yeah, we have, we can't, we don't, I don't remember this many ones.
Got it right here. That's the amount of money that they budgeted for any type of capital projects that may occur or are planned.
But those should be line items if they're big items.
The reason it's under the miscellaneous is because they, they have a variety of projects planned.
Then why don't they line item? Because the people that voted, everybody here can, can see.
Those codes that you're looking at are dictated to the Department of Management. So that's the way we have to code it in our financial software.
I don't agree with that. And I want to know why each one of you sitting up there feels that this is okay.
Allison, what? These projects are wide range. We've got tuck pointing on the county, from the county courthouse building that we have to do. We've got, uh-
So can't you line item that?
We don't have any firm estimates on it. This is an estimate of what our budget's going to be for that. We don't have any firm estimates on it yet. They have to come and do the inspection on it and give us an estimate. So we can't really line item it at this point.
There's no way to line item that out anyway. It's not until it becomes a project.
Right.
But how can you guys approve a half a million dollars? Like I said, I'd like to hear from each one of you on that. Half a million. Do you know what I could do with a half a million dollars?
Yeah.
I have struggled. I have paid my home off. I have worked thirty-seven years. Adam is still working. We have paid our home off work. You know, our budget, like everybody else, just keeps tightening and tightening. Go to the grocery store. All there is is two of us. I can't walk out for less than a hundred dollars. And now you're going to raise our taxes for a miscellaneous half a million dollars?
Oh, we have a building built in nineteen thirty-nine that requires upkeep and maintenance. And it has been ignored for the last twenty plus years.
John, that's the thing. And you know what, John?
Yes.
I'm working in a cemetery right now that has been ignored for over fifty years. I have personally have done fundraisers to pay for that. I have not asked the city or the county for any money to help me with that. I had personally have done fundraisers to get money to repair this cemetery. And it's a historic site. It's in Buchanan County. It's an historical site. And you guys all should be bowing your heads thinking, we let something like this go?
It sounds like we need to list that project, or those projects out and then figure out how much they actually cost or what those estimates are.
You know what they are?
Hello, Jerry.
I mean, you know, but they are, you ask for estimates, right?
We will be, yeah, this spring.
I mean, what are they?
Repairing the wall and plaster in the, in the courtroom. That is water damage from the problem with the tuck pointing where water's gotten in behind it. So they, those need to be fixed. The windows need to be recaulked.
Something needs happening, so leaking.
Yeah. We've got a wall in the jury deliberation room that is crumbling behind the wood paneling that they hit it with twenty plus years ago. And you can actually push on the wall.
Haven't you asked your community to volunteer? You never know. Maybe people in this community would volunteer to come in and do this that are qualified to do that job to help keep taxes down.
I don't think that would be appropriate. And I, I think that probably-
Liability.
Liabilities. You need to have license-
They're insured and they-
You need to have licensed contractors do things like that. So you have some sort of recourse on it. You can't just tell them.
You could ask the volunteers and they just have to be licensed. Or, you know what I mean, right? That's what you were saying. It could be a possibility. As long as there are licensed contractor that would have taken a bid anyway, right?
Yeah.
The licensed contractor?
I mean, I'm not saying-
You have a hard time finding contractors to even bid on things, let alone asking if they make their time.
That's possible.
But if it's a licensed contractor in Buchanan County and they want to help keep taxes down, I'm sure they would be willing to help some.
That's a good point. Thank you.
I haven't heard comments from anybody else other than John. Why do, why do you guys feel that this is okay?
Well, let's see, we have an aging infrastructure. We have a county shop that at some point in time is probably going to need to be repaired because it's leaking on the inside, once again.
So why isn't that line item?
We, there is no way to line item that out, Allison.
You should be able to.
Talk to the Department of Management. That's where we get our codes. And we have to go by those codes. And I'm sorry that, that we can't be more specific and, and do it the way that you would like it done. But we have our hands tied too. We have laws and rules we have to follow, we have regulations, unfortunately. I would like to have an Excel spreadsheet and have it all done that way, but we can't.
Can we put that list out to the public?
We can get a list together.
Anytime a bill is paid, it's publicized. You guys go through it. You get the report. And those are all printed in the paper along, along with the minutes. And it's not just, like, say we spend thirty thousand on tuck pointing. It's going to list out the company, tuck pointing, and the dollar amount. And that's approved. These are, or the bills are presented.
Those don't say what the project is for. It just says that you paid them.
Well, and then they're asking for estimated budget, not necessarily after the deed is done.
Yes, I understand that.
Okay. So can we create a list and identify what these projects are estimated at?
You guys can, it's your budget. You most definitely can create a list of the capital projects that you need done once you get the estimates. What you do with it, that's up to you guys.
And we've done that in the past.
Done that in the past.
When we did the restroom renovations last year. That senior citizen center.
Yeah, we asked them, you know. But the other part of that is, if you do, I did, I had to put the senior center three different times because it took that long to get around to it. So that's also not fair to contractors to say, well, I'm trying to put this budget together. So why don't you just come out here and estimate this? And oh yeah, by the way, we're going to put it out to three other contractors. So you might not even get the job. And then a year down the road, because that's when the fiscal year comes available to spend the money. That's when we're going to, once again, put it out for bid. So, you know, we can put together a list, but it's not going to be as detailed as what you would like it to be.
At least we'd have an idea what you're going to do with a half a million dollars out of our pockets. Keith, I haven't heard anything out of you on that.
Yeah, I, I think that's fair. I think that we need to put that out. I mean, that's, that's a big lump sum that we haven't talked about.
No, you did talk about it.
You did extensively.
Basically, um-
Sorry.
How the, how the boards-
Yeah, I knew you were doing minutes, but-
I'm Chris Wogan Bush. I'm the county auditor.
Auditor of the vote.
Yeah. So this whole process starts in December where I run budget reports and send them out to all the department heads. And then they have to go through and estimate what their possible request is for the upcoming budget. From there, it's given to the Board of Supervisors. And on January, they sit and meet with each department head to go through what their request is. Some requests are granted and some aren't. And then everything's tallied up at the end. And it's ultimately the Board of Supervisor's decision on how they come about, about that.
We've mentioned this stuff in passing, but we've never put dollar values to it. And so, let's see, this is, this is the list for five hundred thousand dollars?
That's what you guys decided on, Keith.
Tuck pointing.
That's what we decided.
Water damage.
We have carpet downstairs that needs to be replaced. They have, the house holes in it where the chairs have just worn through.
And juvenile court services.
And juvenile court services.
Oh, that's carpet as well?
You guys could take photos of these damages and post them publicly. It would help your case a lot more than just saying something. It would. Like, it's such an easy thing to do to put things out there now. And I know you guys are on Facebook. So put it out there if that's your comfort zone. I mean, it's not ideal. My mom won't even get on Facebook. My other sister won't get on Facebook, you know, because of privacy issues. But it at least would be a public forum. If that would be convenient.
Just fun.
I mean, it shows video. It shows picture. It, it justifies what you guys are doing. It lets action. If there's volunteers, they might come forward. They, you know, those things could happen. The wheelhouse.
I agree. Yeah. I agree. That's, that's a great plan of action.
Yeah.
I think we need to do that. And that, that way, like you said, we can justify those numbers to points. I didn't think it was going to be five hundred thousand dollars. It's going to be, that's what we talked about, I guess.
There's part of that. It might be the air conditioner over at the-
That's thirty thousand dollars and that might be this year? At the sheriff's office?
I think that'll be twenty twenty, this next fiscal year. Starts in June, or July. You need to start replacing those out. And if we don't replace them out, they're all the same age.
One of the issues we're running into at the jail that is now, would we say twelve years old? Anyway. Things are beginning to start to wear out and break down. And we've already had one heat exchanger go. And we're going to have to get on to a routine program of replacing one every couple of years so that they don't all go at the same time. Which is a fortunate thing that happens. We run into that with the equipment at secondary roads and everywhere else that things wear out.
Yeah, from our standpoint, two thousand three, the state-
This is Brian Kiley.
Good morning. My apologies, I should have introduced. I'm, I'm Brian Kiley for the Buchanan County Engineer. Two thousand three, the state decided, we can't afford all these roads and bridges. So they dumped thirty-two miles of old state highways onto the counties. And they didn't send any additional monies. They said, counties just have to divide your monies up amongst yourselves. Yeah, there was, Potawatomi County got sixty-some miles of old state highways. Lately, Intercoff trying to figure out a twenty-five year need says, alright, go through there. I have all those roads the state dumped on me. I still have six bridges over seventy years old. You figure seventy years like a bridge. These are on our paved roads. Now, on the other side, they keep dumping heavier and heavier trucks on us. The amount of damage that that does, there was a study on the superloads, which is about the hundred and fifty thousand, hundred and thirty thousand pound loads. They figure over five hundred dollars worth of damage for every mildly travel on our road system.
Brian.
Yes.
My name is Lee Frank in the Brooklyn Township. The county tore a brick out at my place. It wasn't embargoed. Had no weight limit on it. And tore it out and replaced it with another brick.
Which bridge would that be, man?
The front of my house. And you build it up in the area so the water backs up in my yard.
Could I ask what? Oh.
Yeah. I'm the guy.
Yeah. Well, I understand that that was a bridge that you need to replace. And it was in obviously a forced condition.
But it was a Smith bridge with no embargo on it. And you jackhammered it out and put another bridge in there.
Typically, the, the-
That was an Obama bridge. You hauled the rock, the ripped back rock from that bridge to the current Iowa.
If we're replacing a cement bridge, undoubtedly it was on top of wooden piling.
No, it wasn't. It was on Smith.
Frank, I would ask you to get with Mr. Frank maybe after this.
I think I know which bridge, but I can't give the details on that.
We've only got, we've got nine more minutes to go and I, I don't want to-
Can I ask, Brian?
I'm-
The cost of mow, mow a mile of road in this county?
Yeah, it depends on, it depends on the year. Because some years we don't have to do much mowing, some years we do.
The last year, you mowed my road four times. I've never seen it mowed four times with a four-wheel drive tractor, the fanciest stuff in the world. When I grew up in this county, the county was out there with an eight circle mowers and it mowed once. And the people come out and checked it. You have a half-ton truck with a thick fillip and a street fee thing. And we've got the fanciest tractors and the fanciest trucks in the world running this county now.
I've got about six or eight stirrings out there yet too.
I guess we got nine now. So other people will need to see.
Otherwise, I could just-
We'll let you and Mr. Frank have a conversation after the meeting.
Sounds good.
Okay, next, all the way in the back.
Introducing myself, I'm Clint Ohr, living in Kewaski. Not a very good public speaker, but we're doing my best. This property tax stuff is ridiculous. Ridiculous. When you don't have the money, guess what? You go without. You cut. And people will survive. And we will get by. I retired. I live on very modestly. Very modestly. I served seven years in the military. I was honorably discharged. I did my best to uphold the Constitution. So I'm just asking, this property tax is ridiculous. On every point, it, it don't. You have to cut. I don't have a money tree. And you people have to realize, most of the people, I talk to, a lot of people in the county, my township, Kewaski, surrounding Buchanan County. Everyone I talk to is pissed off about this property tax thing.
Have you even figured out where your taxes are?
What?
Have you figured out where your taxes are going to?
Yeah. And a lot of it. East Buchanan School is ridiculous. A lot of these other schools are ridiculous. You been up to East Buchanan?
We, we have no control over-
I know you don't. I understand that.
And-
And I don't like it.
And I do want to address the mailer you got. It was dictated by the state that that gets sent out. And it's completely erroneous information. It's a waste of money. The, last year, the, the counties spent over a million dollars to mail all that garbage out. And it's got false information on it. And it happened again this year. It's, it's approximately twenty to forty thousand per county, I believe, that we had to spend for pretty cost.
Uh, the county has just short of twenty-one thousand parcels. Every parcel owner receives a mailer. The company that we use to send the information to. It does combine those. For, like example, my family, we have quite few parcels. It only comes in one envelope. So we do get to save on postage. But this whole mailing thing is completely out of everyone across the state's hands due to the legislature.
There was a really good article in the, in the Iowa City Press, uh, Citizen Press, whatever it is, the newspaper down there, about the erroneous information that's in there. And it's, it was a waste of time and money to send it out because it doesn't have any factual information. Our actual rate is going up point one three eight seven percent. Point one three eight seven.
You talk about the rate, but what's the valuation due? You can get-
We are held, we cannot raise our valuation over three percent. And they, they were not revalued this past year.
I, I, I'm fine.
I've taken, you're taking Mr. Orks' time here.
I feel with you guys, huge thing that I don't understand on this. We got a legislature down there, that's on the duff, the golfing nothing. They don't even fund those schools. They don't fund those schools. They don't care. And grass these things is, well, we ain't going to get the property tax reform till next year. And next year they'll go down there and it'll be the same damn thing. And you guys got to work with it. And then you guys got to put up with us.
Thank you, Lee. Yeah, if you have anything else you wanted to add?
Just, I hope you realize this is all coming from, and I, I talk to a lot of people.
Oh, absolutely.
And, and if you don't have the money, you cut. Go without. Believe me, I have. That's what we do. You can't keep going around asking more and more taxpayers. Enough is enough. Stop.
Thank you. Okay, we've got another hand up here.
Yeah, I'm Charlie Tallo. I'm a retired Colonel. I'm back after twenty-six years of service. I don't know your air responsibility, uh, so give me a little leeway here. I used to work at the county shop with Osterhaus and get to the engineers at the time.
Russell Creek was my predecessor, but I want to say Annley, but that's not it. Anyway, uh, I'm, I'm just a couple of questions, throw this out. Oh, for you guys with the school board stuff, they're going to be pushing to the schools. So you might want to keep an eye on that.
That's independence, right?
Independence, yeah. But it, it takes, there's areas, schools around that are funded by it. Yes. In the military, we did use self-help. That worked. I know you, you're talking about licenses and all that stuff. Uh, the other thing that Clinton made us do was we cut ten percent of the workforce. Didn't change a thing. Everything got done and it actually worked better
Because the ten percent that were cut really weren't pulling their weight. Uh, COVID, did you get any COVID funds last year or this year?
No COVID funds at the.
No COVID funds.
Nothing since twenty twenty.
I got it at McDonald's, I'm surprised we didn't get some here at, uh, the county, all right, that's all I have, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, a few more minutes, Brinita?
Brinita Whelan, um, I would like to know, since this isn't, what we receive is not really legit. How much are our county expenses going up then from last year to this coming year? Um, and how is that going to affect what we have as property taxes? If this, what we, what we got sent was not accurate, and I'd like to know what is accurate.
It is ac, it's very misleading, unfortunately, because it goes off if you have a property that is valued at a hundred thousand. If you have one that's at a hundred and ten, then this is what it was last year, this is what it could be this year. It's, it's misleading, as far as expenses, the board has those, what the total dollar increase is for this year?
Four hundred and fifty one thousand, four hundred and one thousand.
That's the total dollar increase balanced out expenses and revenue from last year.
Roughly a four percent increase.
When you ask about increasing prices, my road rock increased six point four percent this year and eight point six percent last year. And if you look at the traffic volumes and ask the guys out on the road, we need more rock, not less. So what you end up doing is trying to shift things around and trying to figure out where you can get things to balance out, that's just the realities of it.
Lot less went in digits, so this way. He. Plow the snow.
We didn't have much snow to plow, that was.
I would answer that question, there should be an excess, no, we didn't have the money first of all.
You're right, you're right.
Time, labor, wear and tear on trucks.
There's much as normal, so you're right, and so what we're trying to do, I'm running a bunch of trucks, sterling trucks.
See that, yeah.
They stopped making those in two thousand ten. You can't get parts for them now. That means I need to be replacing trucks.
So you got my American trucks?
Well, I have American trucks now, and here's the problem, my freight liners are made in Mexico.
Yeah.
Um, I pulled an article, or I was given a flyer lately on it, I've been spending just over, right around a hundred thousand, I'll put the boxing snow equipment on another, I'll have a hundred and fifty into it. Saw a flyer just lately from Peterbilt, three hundred and fifty thousand with the snow equipment. What are greeters?
Brian, I'm gonna catch you off, we, we're about out of time, and I want to entertain any other questions.
Let me do this later.
Brad?
I have a question I asked probably ten, twelve years ago, taxes, you know? Uh, before all these housing developments were put in place. Firestone, all these buildings that were paying high dollar taxes. You'll, when, when all these are in place, you're gonna see tax relief like you've never seen before. All the tax money that all these businesses, all these new houses developments are gonna be paying in, we're not gonna have any problem with. We're gonna have a big surplus, you know, we're gonna have tax relief for new people that have been paying taxes for years and years and have been going up. Happened to that theory. You remember, uh, our, our, uh, city manager? Probably one of the first ones, he sold or told us, you know, don't worry, we're gonna have tax relief. All these houses being put up, high dollar. Tax relief, you're gonna have tax relief, where's the tax relief, here it is twelve years later.
I'll, uh, give you the, the easy answer.
Okay.
The state is empathetic to property taxes to the citizens, so they wanted to. Have a way of restricting how much property tax that they in charge. So they gave us a three percent allowable growth and a two percent cap on how much we can. Uh, raise our assessed valuations. If you think about that. All the progress you do on economic development and bringing in these businesses is negated by those growth caps. And therefore, it limits our tax, taxability that we have. So. We're not coming up with a. A big pot of money anyway.
Where's that big pile of money going to these businesses and lawmarts and, and these new stores, and just putting up?
Ryan, Walmart's been in litigation for the last, what, three years, four years against paying their taxes, because they don't agree with their valuation. And we have somewhere.
You should publicly put that out there, people might not shop there, they knew that, until they forced our hand.
Same way with poet up in Fairbank, they're, they're protesting their assessed valuation, so they're not paying theirs, so. Um.
But what happens when people decide not to pay their taxes?
Then we don't get as much money.
Maybe you should do it.
They go to jail, but.
Okay, I'm gonna go to, one more question, then we're gonna have.
One thing, here's the thought. If I own my place, which I own, okay, it's paid off, okay, why do I pay property taxes? How can you say it's, then it's not mine, right? If I don't pay tax, what happens? What happens, goes to the sheriff's sale? Uh, so it's not mine. There's other ways to get taxes. Not property taxes.
Well, currently, that's our only funding mechanism in the state of Iowa, and. Even though you own your property, you're still using county service, you're using the roads, the highways.
We're paying taxes on them roads, road tax, fuel tax. No, my, my farm goes to the middle of the road, I paid for tax on that road.
If you go to a lot of the other states, we have a lottery system, we have a can bill, we have higher gas taxes, we have higher alcohol, tobacco taxes in the state of Iowa. You can go to the other, other states, they're a lot lower. Where's our money going to? What's happening with it? Y'all have a good day when you figure this out.
Thank you.
Might just have to move.
All right, I'm gonna thank everybody for your attendance and your comments, um, we are about six minutes past our time, so. I'm gonna ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to, to re, re-adjourn, what, five o'clock tonight or something?
I'll make a motion to pause the public hearing. We can't re-adjourn because we can't.
Since that would be public, public.
We can't recess, the logo, I'm seeing one other.
Not a public hearing.
I'll second your motion.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right, thank you everyone for attending.
Can we adjourn this meeting so we can start?
So, meeting adjourned, well.
I'll make the motion to adjourn with you.
Thank you.
All in favor? All right. Now I need a, uh.